And extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. Okay, today we have a tornado recovery update. Laura and Stacy.
Okay, you guys should see a presentation. And I'm Laura Mercer. I'm the Executive Director of the Miami Valley Long Term Recovery Operations Group, which focuses on individual and household recovery. And Stacy Swickert is the Director of Strategy Engagement for the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. And she focuses on community recovery, which is really jurisdictionally focused. So I will turn it over to Stacy first to kick it off.
Thank you very much for asking Laura and I to come talk about the work that we've been honored to do for the Miami Valley in the last eighteen, twenty-four months. First, I want to just thank and acknowledge that it was Michael and his leadership and Tyler recognizing that the disaster really struck multiple counties. And so there was a need to have a regional leadership approach to recovery for all of the impacted public agencies and local government jurisdictions. And VRPC has been really proud to do that work in partnership with you. And thank you to the commissioners for the support as we ramped up our administration of this project. You gave us a contract to help with that work. We're funded, as you know, by other state and federal contracts. And we couldn't use those funds to do this work. So we appreciate your assistance while we waited on other federal funding to come through for our leadership. One of the major roles of MVRPC in community recovery is to fully leverage the funding opportunities that were available to our region as a result of the tornado disaster. Certainly, you know, we all wish that it wouldn't have happened. But because it happened, we have been eligible for some funding from different federal agencies that's pretty considerable. In fact, to date, we've secured forty-three point one million dollars in federal investment related to our recovery. So nine point six million of that is through the Department of Commerce, the Economic Development Administration. I've been able to help our impacted jurisdictions with several applications. Our funding to do the work for the next five years is also funded by the EDA. Three point six million dollars for a major upgrade to Dayton's water treatment facilities. We all know how critical that was. Three point seven million dollars for Green County to do upgrades to their sewer system. They also lost water as a result of the tornadoes. And then one point one million dollars for the Miami Conservancy District for upgrades of the Old North Dayton levees. There are also two other applications pending for local jurisdictions that we hope we'll be able to add to this list. In addition, our local agencies have been able to secure more than fourteen million dollars from FEMA in public assistance for their recovery and, I'm sorry, recovery expenses. As Tawana Jones on your team knows very well, HUD has given Ohio twelve point five million dollars in CDBGDR program funds that will help with affordable housing throughout the region. And then Adamas has been able to secure more than seven million dollars in grants to focus on mental health and well-being. Next one, Laura. One of the major upcoming projects that we have is a partnership with an organization called Retreat. They're now part of Keep America Beautiful. And what they do is similar to what Laura is going to talk about here in a minute with teams of volunteer organizations who travel from disaster to disaster to help rebuild and repair homes. Retreat goes from disaster to disaster to replant trees and restore the tree canopy. So mark your calendars for the last weekend of September. It will be the first major tree planting event in our region. The effort will follow the path of the storm over the next eighteen to twenty-four months, planting thousands and thousands of eight to ten-foot trees on private property for homeowners who lost trees as a result of the tornado. We're very excited about this project, and you'll certainly be hearing more about it. Next, please. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about today, and I want to give Tom Kelly a nod. Early in the process, Tom kept saying to us, yeah, but how are we going to track this? How are we going to know when we're making progress? How are, how are we going to tell this story? And it really compelled us to work collaboratively with all of the impacted jurisdictions and with Laura and her team on disaster recovery dashboards. In a minute, when I'm finished talking, I'll drop the link into the chat so that you can all look at them. The disaster recovery dashboards are a GIS product that's produced by my colleagues at MVRPC. We work with the impacted jurisdictions to get data on all of the properties impacted by the tornadoes. This is using the auditor's databases of impacted properties. And what you can see is the most recent update to the dashboard, just shy of seventy-five percent of the properties in our region are recovered. We do still have right around a hundred and fifty properties where there's been no progress at all. In many cases, those are non-residential properties or multifamily properties. Laura is going to talk to you a little bit about the ones that are residential properties. And then we're also still working with jurisdictions. You'll see the gray field that says no data. Those are the areas of the tornado path where we don't have data on whether properties are recovered or not. And to be very honest with you, the tornadoes followed by the COVID pandemic have made it tough for a lot of our partner-impacted jurisdictions to have the team in place to go out and assess the properties. And so we're just waiting on that, but we will continue tracking this data so that we can tell the story of our recovery. Next one, Laura. And then this one transitions very nicely to Laura and her team. But this is the other side of the dashboards. These are the, the individual recovery monitor, which shows that as of right now, for every survivor who entered case management, there's a ninety percent recovery rate. And I'll turn it over to Laura and her excellent work on that.
Thank you, Stacy. So I'll talk a bit about the kinds of work we're doing, as well as some new projects and what our plans are for the remainder of this year as we go through this. So this is a house, this same house on our front page here. So wanted you to see this, and that kind of sets the stage for what I'm going to talk about. In terms of disaster case management, we have now fielded over two thousand cases. Most of them are closed now. We have a hundred and thirty-three open cases at the last time that we had the Red Cross actually pulled data out of the data set that we're using. Seventy-one of those are homeowners that were in the process of still doing repair and rebuild work. Forty-one of those jobs are actually active in construction now. During the winter between the November and starting back in April, we did not have the volunteer teams on the ground. They went away because of the holidays, because of cold weather, and because of COVID. They're coming back in now, starting in April. But in the meantime, we didn't just stop work, we just used contractors. So the expense was a little higher for us. As you can imagine, it costs more to use a contractor to do a roof than it does for us to use volunteers. But we continued to make great progress. We've got about, actually, as of this morning, I think we have fourteen additional projects that we're in the midst of estimating them to assess what disaster caused damage and what will it take to bring them back. We're working very hard to make sure that we've got everybody in the queue now because we've got some resources that will be going away. So I think you probably all have heard about the Federal Home Loan Bank Disaster Reconstruction Program. That ended, ends two years from the dated disaster declaration. So that, that eligibility and that source of funds will be going away on June eighteenth. So every individual family that comes through that is eligible for this money, we apply for it for them so that we can use that towards the recovery. If it's over twenty-five hundred dollars. If it's less than twenty-five hundred dollars, we just fund it so we don't have to go through those hoops. This was the, the house on the front page, and I just wanted to show you just an example of some of the work that we're capable of doing. So the picture on the left is right after the tornadoes. It basically took the top of the structure off, and then there was significant damage, as you might expect, that is the result of that on the interior of the house. The blue is actually asbestos. So the first thing we had to do was find a licensed contractor, an environmental contractor, to take care of that. So the one on the right shows that with the asbestos stripped off. Then we went to demo. Unfortunately, this house was a hundred years old. And when we went to demo, the foundation actually collapsed as well. So it took us a little more time, and we had to go through permitting again to get the foundation approved, and we had to repour it. And then the picture to the right is actually Brethren Disaster Ministries and Habitat for Humanity volunteers actually lifting up the first wall on this house. The house on the left, the picture on the left is about two weeks after that. And the picture on the right is the house complete. That family actually moved back into that house three weeks ago. So you may have seen press related to that. It was a very rewarding situation because the lady that owns the house came to us initially and just wanted help demoing it because she was afraid she would get into trouble for having a structure that was dangerous. And she was convinced that she was going to have to rent for the rest of her life. And so it took, it took a couple of months, really, for our case manager to work with her and for us to figure out the resources to allow us to rebuild this house. You know, because it's probably a seventy thousand dollar job. So between FHLB, money kicked in by the Long Term Recovery Group, and then she was able to leverage her SBA loan, we were able to give her a new house. And her payments are far lower than she would have been paying in rent. This house is right next door to this. This is her parents' house. You can see the front of the house buckled, all of the windows blew off, siding blew out, needed a new roof. So all of that is done. That's another one we did in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. In terms of volunteers in the field, we had last summer, and we will have again starting next month, many teams. So Brethren Disaster Ministries actually has a national site established here. They have a host site set up over on Smithville Road in a church that's no longer in service, and that's where they stay. And they bring teams in from various places around the country. And they stay for a week or two weeks at a time, and they go out and they work on these homes for us. Menonite Disaster Services is working in the field as well. They have a host site that they haven't used yet, but they plan to use it with something called the Pathway Project, which I'll talk about in a bit. Then we also have folks like Southbrook Christian Church, Presbyterian Disaster Assistance, United Methodist, a bunch of others that will come out and actually work on these homes for us. The Pathway to Home Ownership Project, we actually had a groundbreaking yesterday, and Judy spoke for us, which was fantastic. And there, so many of you have been really instrumental in supporting this project. You know, we couldn't do it without folks like Tawana Jones as well and MVRPC. But it's really an affordable housing and a neighborhood stabilization project where we're looking at qualified tornado survivors who are renters that have the ability to become mortgage-ready. And we are using our build teams, all of those volunteers I talked about, to actually construct homes on properties that have been donated by the jurisdictions that will then be sold to the tornado survivors at a market rate with down payment assistance to make sure that they are affordable. This has been a project that has captured everybody's imagination and excitement, and we're very excited about it. We broke ground on the first one yesterday in Harrison Township. And we've got another groundbreaking that we're going to schedule within two weeks for Trotwood. We have two properties side by side that will be going up. In terms of the applicants, this is a really cool equity project in terms of, we have seventeen families that have applied so far, and these are ones that both the disaster case managers have, have found within their realm. And then some of them have gone directly to the Home Ownership Center. Fifteen of the families are African-American, more than half of them have children in the home. We have a veteran, we have two folks with disabilities. All but two of the families have full-time employment. Their, most of them are working in important but low-wage jobs. So things like nurse aide or home health care. They're working in, you know, custodial. They're working, we've got one person that was a school bus driver for seventeen years. So we've got a lot of folks that are just not making a lot of money. And they're spending between thirty-six and forty percent of their income on rent, which isn't really a sustainable amount. So our goal is to get them into a home that they will own and get them to paying less than thirty percent of their income. The survivor process overview is they apply for the program. They're working with, we tried to connect all of this to Blue Sky Organizations because long-term recovery for tornadoes isn't going to be around permanently, and this program can go on. So the Home Ownership Center of Greater Dayton, you know, out of, out of the county corp realm, they're actually working with them as they would with any other person that wants to buy a home in terms of what are your barriers to mortgage readiness? How much can you afford? And what coaching and classes do we need to provide you in order to make sure you're prepared? They work to become mortgage-ready while we're building a home. And as soon as we have a specific space, like the one that's, you know, we're building right now in, in Harrison Township, we can share that information with this prospective homeowner. And if they want it, then they can sign basically a purchase option that will allow us to engage them on things like picking out finishes. As soon as the home is constructed, then County Corp., who is holding the homes while we're doing this project, will help them execute the purchase. And then that money goes back into building the next home. So every dollar we're putting into this, in essence, is in perpetuity for affordable housing. And once we get through the tornado survivors, County Corp. will just roll it into their regular affordable housing programs. So it's, it's pretty slick. This is a rendering of the first house that we're going to build. We call this one the Red Bud. It's basically a three-bedroom, two-bath house. It's a little under twelve hundred square feet. So we're building this one on, on Sailor Avenue in Harrison Township, and we'll also be building one on Marlin in Trotwood. These are the first sites that we've got. So, I mean, the jurisdictions and the city of Dayton have been great to work with in terms of, and Montgomery County Land Bank. You know, we were able to go out and look. Susie Crable from Montgomery County Land Bank and I went out and assessed all hundreds of properties, really, and looked for places that would be great places to locate a family that would fill in a gap in a neighborhood. And those are the lots that we selected. This is a rehab that's right next to the one on Marlin that we're going to do a new build on. And Presbyterian Disaster Assistance and Brethren Disaster Ministries are taking this one on. So wanted to talk a little bit about what's going to happen with individual recovery over the next year. So by the end of October. So again, remember that this is individual and household recovery. This is the overall organizational structure for how recovery is working in the region. The left side of it, the green side of it, is the area that I'm responsible for, individual and household. And the right-hand side of it, the yellow side of it, is the area that MVRPC is leading. We have a disaster recovery leadership board that sits in the middle that Commissioner Lieberman is on. The timeline for recovery in both of these different areas varies. Individual and household recovery, it's, you know, based on a, a national voluntary organizations active in disaster rule. It's for every ten days, an emergency shelter is open. It takes ten times that for the immediate recovery, and it takes ten times that for the longer-term disaster recovery, which puts us at right about three years for expected timeframe. At the end of October, we'll be about two and a half years. And given that this was Dayton, everybody really came together, and we've been able to expedite this and do very well at it. The community recovery is going to take much longer. Stacy and her crew will be working for the next five to ten years because a lot of that ties to federal money and big infrastructure projects. So it takes obviously a little longer to get that, those things shaked out. When we look at individual recovery, and Stacy showed this dashboard, we look at the cases, and we look at the recovery rate, you know, we're getting very close. You know, when I talked about having a hundred and thirty-three open cases and only seventy-one of them that were repair, rebuild, we're going to get the work done. So that's kind of the, the rationale for turning it down in terms of our operations. We have done a whole lot to try to promote the awareness of the availability of help. Obviously, we've done a lot of media, both print, radio, television, social media. We have done canvassing door to door. We've done organizational outreach through churches and jurisdictions. We have done signage on construction sites. We have done billboards. So we've done a lot of that, and we've done certain points in time where we really tried to press people to ask for help if they needed it. We've got a couple of last pushes that we're doing to try to make sure we're not leaving anybody behind. This one is really important. This is, we're looking at, we're using those dashboards, we're using that data to identify the properties that are owner-occupied, single-family properties that the jurisdictions have said, we don't see any progress here, something is wrong. And we are going out to those folks directly, either by mail or by actually canvassing, although some of the homes are not occupied at this point, to see if we can get them to come into the system so that we can help them out. And we actually have one that I just dinnered into the system today in Trotwood that is in that situation. And most of the time, what we're finding is people were just completely overwhelmed with how to proceed because their damages are so bad, and they had so many problems with things like insurance or contractor fraud. The other place that we're going is we're working very closely with legal aid to make sure that they don't have any people in their catchment that we aren't already working with. So our plan is that by the end of October of this year, we will be able to wrap up the individual case management stuff. We anticipate that all of the repair and rebuild work will be complete, and the recovery needs of individuals will be met. So most of the renters have been stabilized. You know, it's been almost two years, so most of them have been rehomed. We've dealt with the possession loss, those kinds of things. We're still doing some cleanup. We're working with the tree recovery campaign that, that Stacy is talking about in terms of building new trees and then also taking out trees that are problematic. So that, that stuff is happening in tandem. There's some really great synergy that's happening right now with the Retreat Campaign in conjunction with the International Association of Arborists, where we're getting some really comprehensive approaches towards dealing with the debris. And then there's a ton of coordination that goes on between the Long Term Recovery Group, which I lead, and the Community Recovery, which Stacy leads. So we talk on a regular basis. We're also working with the social services organizations that have some piece of this kind of stuff to ensure that we have a really seamless transition. We had planned for this dissolution at the very beginning. So that's written actually into our bylaws. So this is an expected thing. We anticipated that this should have been, this was a response to an incident that we want to finish up and do our work and be done with it. This is the proposed dissolution timeline. So the first two things have already happened. In the April meeting of the Long Term Recovery, we're going to present the dissolution principles and discuss that at the Long Term Recovery Group meeting, and then have the voting members vote on it. And June fourth, we're going to bring it back to the leadership board so that they can do a resolution in support, should they choose. And then we're, we're planning to dissolve it. If something big were to happen, like we were going to get an influx of a hundred cases right now, we could, you know, potentially extend it by three months at a time to take care of that. I don't anticipate that's going to happen, but if it did, we would take care of it. We're, we're trying to make sure the individuals are, are taken care of. That is the set of slides. So Stacy and I are happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say to you two, thank you. You know, less than two years, here we are. And, I mean, and, and a year of it, we've been in a pandemic. And, I mean, I remember Laura, after it first happened, you just pitching in and Sinclair. And so thank you to Sinclair for loaning the community you because your leadership on this, Laura, has been incredible. And while we, you know, have, have seen the work that you've been doing, I don't know that you've gotten the recognition for really leading this and taking it on and coordinating it and working with all the partners and, and not only, but you're also on the ground. That's what I've been so impressed about. I remember when those guys came in, the guys that go all around the world doing the tree.
Team Rubicon?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, they're, Laura, making sure they were fed and making sure they were taken care of and just, it's been amazing. And Stacy, since you joined us, you guys are a great team, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And, you know, it, the pandemic made things really, really challenging. You know, it, it impacted, like, we were supposed to have a bunch of teams that came in and established national sites, and they couldn't. So, and they had to listen to their leadership, but some of them did. And the other ones did as much stuff locally as they could. And, you know, everybody just, everybody is doing the right thing for the right reasons. And it's, it's such, it's been such a, I mean, I get till talking about it because it's been such a, a great experience to work with, with all of those on the ground and all of you guys. And, you know, you guys showed really great leadership during this, too. And like Stacy said, I mean, it was Tom that was on us from the very beginning when we were just scrambling to make things work, that he's like, you need data, how are we going to track this? And that has been so valuable that, that, you know, we listened to him, and we, we took the time to try to figure out how we were going to do that because that really helps us tell this story. And it also tells us that, hey, we're almost done with this part, and we can just focus on this part now. So kudos to, to all of you for your leadership and guidance in, in getting this rolling.
I'd echo that completely, and the support from everybody at the county, all the different departments, all the way up to, you know, Tyler and Michael, supporting the work. And I think you all know what local jurisdictions have been through in the last year with the pandemic. And then add to that, everybody who has been awaiting federal funds from FEMA and the EDA, who took on the Administration of CARES Act dollars, which meant everything else kind of ground to a halt. So we've done our best. I think that Laura and I would both say that the Dayton Foundation have been just amazing partners. And, and I think probably not many realize how much they are really ingrained in the day-to-day work of making sure that this recovery is really transparent and responsible and something we can all be really proud of.
That's a great point. Thanks for bringing that up. Thank you.
And I would certainly, you know, jump on the bandwagon and echo all the comments made, you know, to everyone involved. And, you know, from the beginning, you know, out of great disaster comes great opportunity. And it's truly another example how we've brought out the best of the best. One question that I have, and maybe it falls under Stacy, but there are like large, and I haven't been lately, so maybe there's progress, but like some large apartment complexes and whatnot that look like nothing's been done. And, you know, I know that those apartments could just decide they're not going to reinvest. But is the housing situation for people who are renters and not homeowners, I would, you know, my concern is that that has to be a stress on the system? Is that something we are also, or is that a bigger conversation than just a comment here?
Well, I think that I can, I can confirm what you're saying, that there are several apartment complexes that have had no progress. And, and I think, you know, one of the things that Laura and I talk about as a team all the time is that Laura's work is wrapping up, and you saw that ninety percent number. But when you drive through the communities, there are still things that remind you and sure make it look like we're not close to the, to being fully recovered. And some of those multifamily units are, are, are part of that issue. Tawana on your team is probably the best person to talk about specifically what is going on and specifically about the impact. But we have been coordinating. Tawana is leading an effort to get the investment from HUD for affordable housing that'll be within the county, not necessarily right back where it was, but within the county so that the stock is replaced. And working on the demolition. Keep in mind that all the, the coordination of all these state and federal funds in the background to do the demolition moves at the pace of state and federal government. So, so there are things happening, but it sure doesn't look like it.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what, what the other two commissioners have said. Thank you, thank you so much for everything you're doing. A shout out to Steve Johnson and Brian Martin for allowing them to, for allowing, you know, for you two to step up to the plate. And the volunteers that have come from all over, frankly, the community as well as our whole area that have, you know, just been there to help, help everybody. And one of the things I really am so excited about the tree planting because I live north, and a lot of times I'll go down Riverside and shoot mill. Oh, don't even get me started. It's just so heartbreaking. And that is going to be such a difference when some trees are planted there, as well as in other people's homes and yards and everything. So I just think it's great. One quick question. If someone is watching, I'm sure we have thousands of people watching, what's the phone number that they could call if they think they might qualify for one of the homes in the Pathways Project? Or who can they contact?
That, there is an application that's actually posted on the Home Ownership Center of Greater Dayton's website. So if they just go there and they fill out that application, they'll have a counselor that will reach out to them. The other thing I would suggest is if you look at those dashboards, and Stacy posted the link there, there are filters on there so you can click around. So if you look at the no-progress properties, and then you look at the, you click on the filter that's just owner-occupied, single-family, that's, that's the list that I'm working with. But if you want to see the broader amount, like, there are ones that were vacant before that are on that list as well. So obviously, we can't go out and fix those. But, and then we're also seeing, and, you know, I still have to sort through this data some because there were like sixty that were no progress, that were single-family, owner-occupied, that we're targeting right now. Some of those have changed hands post-tornado to out-of-state buyers, which is have changed hands post tornado to out-of-state buyers, which is not necessarily a good thing. And that's going to make it tougher for the jurisdictions. But again, you know, as Stacy said, as you're driving through these communities, it might look like there's still like major problems, but a lot of times it's super complicated like that. They were already in disarray, they're owned by businesses. You can also look at the commercial properties that way and the multifamily properties. So those tools are fantastic. You know, the team at MBRPC in terms of their competencies and putting data together and making it usable, it's just outstanding.
It's amazing, isn't it? The things that you can see and the path and everything. One last thing I want to add, Judy made me think about it. The trees that were taken from Sinclair Park, some of them are being repurposed at the arcade. Judy and Carolyn and I were there last week on a tour and they're, they're going to try to use some of those trees throughout, throughout different parks. And so it was like, really? How cool is that? So I can't wait to see that when it's finished.
They're also looking at rebuilding some smaller shelters within Sinclair Park using some of that lumber as well and thinking about how to share it with neighboring communities who also had losses in parks where some of the timber could be useful.
That's great. Thank you, lady.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It was very.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, county engineer.
Good afternoon, commissioners, administrative ladies and gentlemen. Great work Stacy and Laura. Thank you. We have three resolutions today. First is Resolution 21333 to amend the agreement with Eagle Bridge Company for the Alex Bell Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in Washington Township by adding $473.50 to the original amount for a revised total of $750,947.33. 334 is to authorize a payment by warrant in the amount of $62,747.25 to the City of Vandalia for permissive tax funds for the 2019 Northwoods Boulevard Reconstruction Phase One Project. And 335 is to set the date of April 20th, 2021 for the viewing and April 27th, 2021 for the hearing on the Air Hill Road Bridge Reconstruction Project in Perry Township.
I move to approve. Second.
All those in favor. County sheriff.
Thank you, commissioners. Under county sheriff, we have Resolution 333 authorize the purchase through Omni Partners Cooperative Contract from Gray Bar Electric Company for HVAC services for the 800 megahertz radio system located at the Regional Dispatch Center in an amount not to exceed $56,771.26 through March 16, 2022.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Juvenile court.
Under juvenile court, we have Resolution 337 authorize amendment number 13 to the sublease agreement with the Ohio Department of Youth Services with respect to the Center for Adolescent Services.
I move to approve. Second.
All those in favor. Treasurer's office.
Under the treasurer's office, we have Resolution 338 accept the investment reports from November and December 2020 and January 2021.
I'm in for approval.
All those in favor. Aye.
And I just want to say, I think, you know, it's been reported now that, and he's called all of us, that Russ is resigning as treasurer. And just wanted, you know, to give him a shout out that he did a great job the past two years.
He certainly has. Well, missing. And Paul Bradley is going to be appointed as interim.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's great. Great news. County administrator.
Under the county administrator, under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on March 23rd, 2021. Resolution 339 approval of bills and that list is available in the clerk's office.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Administrative services.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We have a variety of resolutions for your consideration today. The first is 340, this is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 330, I'm sorry, 341 is the approval of travel and expenses. This list is also available in the clerk's office. 342 authorizes payments by warrant for various vendors for the administrative services department. 343 authorizes the purchase for various types of ammunition from Vance Outdoors Incorporated for the sheriff's office in an amount not to exceed $66,946.75. 344 authorizes a change order to the agreement with Security 101 LLC Security Contractor for the Court Security Improvement Project for a time extension only through October 31st of 2021. The following two resolutions authorize agreements. The first is 345 with BMS Cat Incorporated to provide document restoration services for the Risk Safety and Emergency Management Department in an amount not to exceed $10,545. And 346 is with Service Express for server maintenance for Justice Web for the Strategic Initiatives Department in an amount not to exceed $3,360 through February 28th of 2022. And the last two resolutions extend price agreements. The first is 347 with Francis Kennels for cremation services for the Animal Resource Center through April 30th of 2022. And last is 348 with Joe R. Fink Construction Company Incorporated for concrete repair services for the Environmental Services Department through March 31st of 2022.
I'm in for approval.
A second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Environmental services, Charlie's here for Matt.
We can't hear you.
Thank you, commissioners. We have three resolutions for your consideration. Resolution 349 authorize an agreement with Joe, I'm sorry, Jose and Adrina Vera for refund services paid for sanitary services not provided and agreeing to connect to the public sanitary sewer system. 350, agreement with Kinnison Excavating Inc. for the West Franklin Water Main Replacement Project by adding $58,644, the original amount for a revised total of $1,408,404 and extending the term of the agreement through July 30th of 2021. And then Resolution 351 to approve the plan specification and estimate, estimated cost of $498,140 and solicit bids for the construction of water facilities for the Brickler, Bricker Water Main Replacement Project.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
OMB, John.
Thank you, commissioners. I have five resolutions for your consideration this afternoon. 352 authorize appropriation amendments. 353 to authorize additional appropriations. 354 to authorize cash transfers. 355 authorize appropriation amendments by transfer from general fund contingencies. And 356 authorize support of the Montgomery County Agricultural Society for the Senior Fair, Junior Fair, Maintenance and General Operations in an amount not to exceed $52,461 through December 31st, 2021.
I'm in for approval.
A second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Nice to have the fair back this.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah. Human services, Tom.
Thank you. Under Job and Family Services, I have two items. 357 will authorize a payment by warrant to Goodwill Resource Solutions Limited in the amount of $4,192.50. And 358 will terminate the memorandum of understanding approved by Resolution 20-656 with connect for support of the 30-day to family program through June 30th of 2021.
I'm in for approval. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Business services, Tawana.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This afternoon, we have three community development block grant agreements for approval. 359 is for the Village of Carlisle for the John Street Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $86,500. Resolution 360, again with the Village of Carlisle for the Roscoe Route 88 upgrades parking lot paving project in an amount not to exceed $57,000. And finally, Resolution 361 with the City of Huber Heights for the South Point Crossing Demolition Plan Phase Two project in an amount not to exceed $107,000.
I'm in for approval.
A second. All those in favor. Under county commissioners, 21-0362, reappoint Stephanie Singer to the Board of Trustees of the Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District for a two-year term expiring January 31st, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Okay. County administrator.
Thank you, commissioners. You know, it's amazing. We just had the update from our tornado recovery group. And we pushed out a news release about severe weather preparedness week, last, just last week. And sure enough, on Thursday, we had thunderstorms and devastating wind gusts blow through our county. More than 20,000 homes lost power in our area. And we had wind gusts in excess of 60 miles per hour. Jeff Jordan, our Director of Office of Emergency Management, if something does happen, Jeff and our partners in the engineer's office, so thank you, Paul, our fire chiefs, our public health, our sheriff's office, our Red Cross, and all of our other agencies together as a team are prepared to respond. Now, this is the team that is part of our emergency operations center. But the best thing we can do for all of us is have a family plan and gathering needed supplies in the event of severe weather. Make sure that you always have bottled water on hand and you get non-perishable food items, flashlights, fresh batteries, first aid kit, matches, blankets, and many other items that you will need in the event that there is an emergency. Now, Jeff and his team have prepared a list that you can find on our website and it is up on the slide right now. Please go to mcohio.org/departments/emergency-management. Again, that's mcohio.org/departments/emergency-management. And see the list and try to have these items in your house in the event of an emergency. Commissioners?
I was just going to say quickly, I know we just had a presentation from the long-term recovery group and I was lucky enough to go to the groundbreaking ceremony at the Pathways Project in Harrison Township. And little brisk day, but we had a nice little crowd there. And, you know, it's so exciting because it's some, oh, boy. It's, you know, it's so nice that, I have my winter coat on. But anyway, you know, it's so nice that these individuals are going to be able to actually, you know, buy their own home and get help doing it. And the Home Ownership Center, you know, is helping the owners become mortgage-ready. And Sinclair's Construction Technology Program is helping build these homes as well as volunteers. So, you know, it's just a wonderful, wonderful program with all of our friends and so much collaboration. So we're just very proud of that, that we've been able to help on that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, that's really been amazing what they've done. I couldn't, I don't think any of us could imagine it, those days after the tornado and just even months after that we could be where we are today. So I'm glad you were able to go yesterday, Judy. So just a few comments from me. Our Family Assistance Division is engaged in a customer service initiative that's designed to improve case resolution activities. The goal is to quickly get the best resolution for our customers, to identify the ways to improve case processing and minimize the time required to receive benefits. There you see, when you walk in to the Family Assistance Center, what you see. And we understand that there's frustration of not getting the support you need timely. And that's why we're putting a lot of effort towards setting goals for improving the response time for customer inquiries. And this is especially important considering our increased volume that we've seen coming to the Family Assistance Division as a result of the pandemic. You know, people that maybe have never, ever needed assistance have been, have been coming through our doors and calling. And so the volume of that work being received is a direct reflection of the immediate needs by our county residents. And so we really appreciate the hard work of our team, what they're doing to get our citizens the assistance that they need. In January and February, 6,500 inquiries were resolved after initial contact with our call center reps. And so at that point, there was no referral needed. So they were able to resolve it right away. But that doesn't happen all the time. 1,700 case changes were completed to ensure that customers get timely and accurate benefits. And more than 3,000 email inquiries were received by the resolution team. So I just wanted to say, great job, Family Assistance Team and to the community, bear with us as we are really becoming a lot, a lot faster at this. But, you know, oftentimes the commissioners, we get calls in our office and, and, you know, our team tries to resolve it at the job center right away. And so I just wanted to give them a shout out and say, great job.
I would chime in on that. So I'm going to take a little bit different tact and I have some fun trivia for you today. Did you know that today is Take a Walk in the Park Day? And looking outside my window, I think it's a perfect day. It'll be a brisk walk. But as all three of us know, we have rescue dogs. So there's no better excuse than a day like today, since it's, you know, Take Your Walk in the Park Day, to take it with your best buddy. So we have some pictures of some adorable pups who need to find a forever home. And so that somebody out there is walking alone today, but if they would just come down to the Animal Resource Center, we could solve that. So this first precious pup is Barada. And she has been in the Animal Resource Center since July. She is eight years old and she likes to nap. So anyone who doesn't want a real lively pup, Barada might be your dog. She's a little shy, but they said, once she gets to know you, she will warm right up. And you have not found a better buddy than Barada. Then we have Debbie, whose favorite thing is to scratch behind her ears. And she really likes a little extra kibble. So it's always good to know what their tastes are. She's been at the Ark since September. And she is waiting for the very right person to whisk her up and take her home. And finally, we have Girlie, who came to us in January and they say she is super sweet and brings sunshine on even the cloudiest of days. So if there's anyone out there looking for a best friend, look no further. We have some great options for you. So you can contact our Animal Resource Center if you'd like to adopt one of these girls, or we have more. That number is 937-898-4457. And I know we can all attest that our rescue dogs become our furriest members of the family. And we can't imagine life without them once they come home. So shout out to all the animals in Ark who want to celebrate National Walk in the Park Day with someone special in our community.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah. When we were live, we would have the Animal Resource Center bring in a dog every once in a while to show off, to say, you know, this, this dog is, is available for adoption. So hopefully soon, we're going to be able to get back to that. If everybody would please wear their masks and social distance and wash your hands. And the other thing is that Commissioner Lieberman reminded me, and that is, come on, everybody, get your vaccination. Now, there's no, not much of a waiting time anymore. I think there's several places you can get them. I've seen signs at Kroger's, CVS, different places. So I think it's time. So I think it's time.
My 17-year-old niece got it.
Everybody can, trust me.
All ages.
Pardon?
I said my 17-year-old niece got hers and so all ages.
All ages. Yep, yep, yep. So that's my mantra from, from now on. So, um, guess what? Our next meeting is, you're never going to believe this, Tuesday, April 6th. How did this happen? Anyway, at 1:30 right here.
Oh, but isn't there something special happening on April 4th?
No, there isn't.
I, I, I think I remember that not, I think it's someone, the Judy Dodge birthday day?
It's on my calendar.
Okay, well.
Okay, fine.
Happy birthday in advance.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate, thank you. I try not to make too much of a fuss anymore, so.
Oh, no, we have to celebrate every one of them, especially after the year we've been in.
That's true. Thank you.
We need to be, celebrate any excuse.
Any excuse. You're right. That's for sure.
You can, you can go to Red's opening day too.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be 31 degrees for you if you go.
I know. That's what they're saying, very cold day, April 1st. Whoa.
That's spring in Ohio.
It'll change Friday.
Well, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor.
Have a great week.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, ready.